Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and National Anthem. Aye. This has to remain standing for a moment of silence. Mary Mulaney, who served on the school committee for a number of years. Thank you.
Gracias.
We do a roll call?
Member Alvarez. Here. Member Biancheria.
Here.
Member Benanda.
Here.
Member Guardiola.
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Here.
Member McCullough.
Here.
Member Mailman.
Here.
Member Roy.
Here.
Mayor Petty.
Here. Let's start with the consent agenda. E. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancheria.
Yes.
Member Benanda.
Yes.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
Yes.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
Yes.
Member Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Petty.
Uh, yes. F, item for reconsideration, we have four dash six one. Dedicate the basketball court channel elementary school, remember Antonio Ross. And also, uh, to see the action dedication in the name of the new basketball court authority high school in the honor of Emmanuel Manny Familia by Christian King. So take a roll call on whether you want to reconsider this or not. So a yes vote would be reconsidered, a no vote would not to be reconsidered. Roll call.
Member Alvarez.
Yes.
Member Biancheria.
No.
Member Benanda.
No.
Member Guardiola.
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson.
No.
Member Mailman.
Yes.
Member McCullough.
No.
Member Roy.
No.
Mayor Petty.
Uh, no. Since we are on public comment, a member of the public may address the committee regarding an item before the committee for two minutes. Two minutes. Is your name and item number?
Yes, absolutely. Fred Nathan. I'm happy that the reconsider vote went the way it did. It is obvious to me that there are sour grapes out here that wanted to reconsider the naming of that gym because for whatever political motivation reasons go through their head, it, I guess it is what it is. When you had to defund the police and all that, so many people, things unfortunately get taken that way. But it, it, I was happy that the vote went the way it did just now instead of the normal six to three. I commend the people who voted appropriately here and now, but before I cut away, I just want to say, in this landscape of political witchcraft and everything else we're seeing around this country, I think it is a political disservice for whoever asked the Worcester Patch to go after Maureen Benanda.
Do you have an item on your agenda? We're not going to do that.
Yes, but I still, I, I have two minutes.
No, you're out of order. I'm sorry. You have two minutes on items on your agenda.
Well, I think I made my point.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Is your name, city residence, and item number?
Sure. My name is Heather Preneer. I live in Worcester. I would just like to say that I know that, uh, sorry, item K?
Yeah, as long as it's on your agenda.
Okay. Um, the superintendent's review, I'd like to speak to the difference in the way that I have been treated. I'm sure that everyone's well aware of the article that came out in October. And I would like to say that the way that I have been treated as a resident of the city, as a parent of children who have, who attend Worcester Public Schools, um, and an engaged member of the community, that this administration has treated me and everyone involved in this incredibly differently than I was treated when I was a child, and incredibly differently than I was treated by the previous administration, who didn't have time to respond to, uh, how I felt unsafe in the schools. So I would just like to say that I think that this administration is doing an incredible job, listening to parents, listening to students, listening to teachers. I think that it's unfortunate that there are some members of the school committee who are incredibly petty and, uh, trying to bring up every single thing that they can think of to make it more difficult, an already difficult job more difficult. But I would just like to say thank you to the administration on behalf of myself, on behalf of my children, on behalf of survivors, and, um, that I know that there are plenty of other parents who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but I was in touch with, who have felt heard and seen by this administration and who appreciate the fact that our complaints, that our, everything does not fall on deaf ears. So thank you.
Thank you. Is your name, city residence, and item number?
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Deana Tedeschi, and I reside at 25 Morgan Street in Worcester. Among many things, I am most importantly a parent of a South High 24 graduate and a soon-to-be seventh grader at GSA at Sullivan Middle School. My comments are in reference to agenda item in K, ROS four dash 10, Report of Superintendent. For over 13 years, I've been heavily involved in, and in paying attention to activities, engagement, and opportunities for parents, students, and families in and around my children's schools. I've never felt more welcome and included than in the last few years since Dr. Monares became superintendent. Unequivocally, her listening tours, family and community engagement roundtables, and general action to attend and support meetings for students, parents, and others have been appreciated and a breath of fresh air, giving more families a voice and a seat at the table. The number of families and students in attendance at last fall's Know Your School Nights, from my experience, was unprecedented. The decrease in the number of suspensions in an elementary school setting is staggering, with 576 in school year 19 and only about 92 in school year 24. That first number is like an entire large elementary school, plus being absent on any given day. More students are being supported to help them stay in school, which is a key objective, and to learn quality coping mechanisms with Worcester Public School restorative practices. Something that was a strong current during the selection process was families expressing how much they felt Worcester and our schools were beautifully diverse. We see more of this diversity reflected in the staff and administration, and we love it. That didn't happen by accident. These and other intentions, promises, and commitments by Dr. Monares make our schools better, our community better, our families better, and most importantly, our students and their future is better. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Hello, my name is Anne Bureau. I'm a Worcester resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of, um, item K, ROS 10. I'm here on behalf to speak on the very important work that the school administration has been able to accomplish this year and want to applaud Superintendent Monares. Our coalition, Worcester Community Connections of U Inc., Seven Hills, works with parent leaders and other community partners to help address gaps in services and risk factors that can impact families and lead to involvement in the child protective system. When the superintendent came in September 2022, we worked with an amazing group of parent leaders to bring her the top priorities as they saw it at the time. The great importance of after-school care, importance of social, emotional support of kids, a new approach to school discipline with more of a restorative justice approach, the importance of addressing racism and discrimination, the great struggle with mental health needs among families, not just teaching to the MCAS, importance of preparing our kids for college and life beyond, and support for parents who have children with special needs, and bullying. It is incredible that all of these areas have been prioritized by the administration and concrete steps put in place to address them. Deans in our high schools, culture and climate staff, wellness rooms, mental health supports, rap, all the rap coordinators, which have led to an increase in parent involvement, roundtable parent facilitations, restorative practices, anti-bullying programming, mental health integration, and I could go on. And most important, the parents we know of have been so appreciative of all the work to hear and to meet with parent voice. This has meant the world to them. Our families are so grateful for all the work you've done. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Okay. Is your name, city residence?
My name is Barbara Mudd. I'm a resident of West Boylston, and I'm a chair of the Worcester NAACP. And, um, I'm here around the item, around the superintendent's self-reflection and evaluation. For nearly five years, I've been following Worcester Public School Committee meetings. And two years ago, when Dr. Monares arrived, there began to be a shift in the discussions around equity, inclusion, belonging, and diversity. The community had long, had long been asking for the reimagining of school safety. It is a huge initiative of both the national NAACP and also the local NAACP to, for steps to be taken that stop the school-to-prison pipeline. This superintendent and the administration and the staff of Worcester Public Schools have worked incredibly hard to reimagine school safety and prevent, present a vision that gives access to stopping the school-to-prison pipeline. A few weeks ago, I attended a, uh, a parent meeting. It was actually at Heather's house. It was just here. It was on a Saturday, and it was three hours long. I've been in education since, uh, the 1970s, and I had never before witnessed such remarkable listening and parents who were willing to be vulnerable and open about some of the, both strengths and some of the challenges that they've had in the Worcester Public Schools. I would, a lot of what I would, a lot of what I was going to say repeats what, um, Anne Bureau was going to say, said, so I'm gonna, in the interest of time, I'm going to not do that. But I want to say that the superintendent also took time to actually come to an NAACP meeting and present her vision of learning and the strategic plan to, um, the entire NAACP of Worcester, and it was very well received. And there were a number of members and parents from the community there who, um, are, who see the level of engagement, the beginning of trust that's beginning to grow in the Worcester Public Schools since, uh, since new administration. And I also want to comment, I mean, there's just so many, there's so much, there's so much in the, in the strategic plan itself, but I do want to mention that also, you know, the focus on cultural responsiveness and the willingness of the administration to look at Black history as American history and want to give more access to students of the Worcester Public Schools.
Could you wrap up your comments?
To a fuller, complete, uh, history.
Can you wrap up your comments, please? Could you wrap up your comments?
No. I'm finished. I'll wrap up.
Okay.
So I just want to speak on behalf of myself as a chair and also on behalf of the NAACP. We look forward to continuing our work with the Worcester Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Is your name, city?
Hi, my name is Holly Montero. I'm a resident of District Five here in Worcester, and I just want to speak on item K. And I just really want to say thank you very much to Superintendent for all the amazing work that she's done since she's come here. There's been such an improvement in our school system, and I had one of my children already graduate, and I've got three more going through, and so it's just been a real breath of fresh air to see the change that has happened. I was at a CPAC meeting that the superintendent spoke at, and I had brought up, um, an issue that I had with the bus system. And a few weeks later, she found me at the city manager's speech and came up to me and said that she had been trying to work on that, and that was an amazing thing to see that you even just remembered in the first place and to, to address it and let me know. So really appreciate that. I know I'm speaking for many parents when we say thank you so much for everything that you're doing, and we look forward to your continued work here in the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Crystal Guzman. I'm from Worcester. I have a total of six children, three that have already graduated Worcester Public Schools, and three that are still currently in Worcester Public Schools. And pretty much they've said everything that I've wanted to say, um, in a formal setting. But, um, I want to say and commend, um, Ms., Mrs. Monares, which is Rachel, you know, and it's amazing because she's, Rachel knows most of our names, you know, which is amazing. It's on a different level that we've never had before. We, Worcester wanted change so bad that we literally, a former school committee member had to go to California to interview and sought out Mrs. Monares. That says a lot. Worcester was in dire need of some change. She's bringing that change, and I think that those that are, continue to keep opposing the work that her and her administration is doing should be ashamed of themselves. They're a bunch of bullies, and they need to stop that, and they need to think about things, because if you're not part of the solution, then you become part of the problem, and Worcester has enough issues on its own. I'm going to address you as Rachel. Rachel, keep up the great work that you're doing. Don't let anybody tell you otherwise. You speak volumes. Your work speaks volumes. Your people that are behind you, your administration speaks volumes, and it's self-explanatory on the change that's happening. We really, really commend you, and we are super thankful and grateful for you being here in Worcester. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a couple of people. Okay, one more.
Hi, sure. Uh, my name is Frances Anthez. I'm a resident here in Worcester. I have three children who started out at Elm Park Community School, went on to the Burncoat Magnet Programs, went on to Ivy League Colleges, have masters in their professions, and I would consider them Worcester Public Schools' success stories. But because I'm an Elm Park parent, first, last, and always, I guess, I know the story of John Adams, who in 1755 came and taught at a school that was on North Main Street, and that school eventually evolved into the Dick Street School, and that school eventually evolved into Elm Park Community School. So I recognize that here in Worcester, we have a legacy that goes back hundreds of years for quality education, and I can really say that my children experienced that, and I appreciate that, and I thank all of the people who were involved in that, um, over the years. But I also recognize that not all children have been successful. And I appreciate that in this administration, we seem to be recognizing and addressing that in a way, as a number of parents have taught out, that's new and that's good. And one of the things I recognize about the downside of being a school, a school system that we know goes back hundreds of years, is we come up, we become a little bit insular, and we come, become a little bit connected to our own ways of doing things. And frankly, we become a little bit nasty to new ideas, and opposed to new ideas, and to newcomers. And I would really not want that tendency that we have to fall upon the work of this school committee, to fall upon the work of this school administration, and to fall upon this community, because we'll all pay for that in the long run. In my opinion, Rachel Monares is a dynamic, intelligent leader. She successfully created positive systemic change. Her approach includes, to that creating, needing change, includes the experience that she brings, but also the value that she places on the voices that we've heard today of students and parents and educators and the community. She leads with knowledge and grace. She presents positive data and facts, and she explains her decisions to the community. She empowers, and, she empowers an effectively realigned, um, management team. They're, they're restructured, and they're doing a good job. Her leadership is creating positive outcomes for learners, families, and the community, and I urge you as school committee members to continue to support her and her very important work. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mayde Morales, City of Worcester. I'm here to support Superintendent Dr. Rachel Monares. Thank you for coming to our community. Thank you for everything that you're doing in our community. She has, um, done so much for our community schools in order to make them a true part of our community. She has opened her heart and mind and demanded the same of her staff to listen and act upon to meet the needs of the parents and scholars. Have you all ever heard that before she came into our community? Our students are called scholars. There's an expectation, right? We, we know that they can learn, and she brought that here. You did that. I saw you tour all these different spaces in our community when you first got here to learn about them. I see you, um, talking to parents. I see you talking to students. Where, what are your needs? Where are the gaps? And I see you meeting all of those. Our wraparound coordinators are a great partner and an integral part of our community and the success of our students. I am always pleasured and happy to work with, um, and support the wraparound coordinators in our community. Representation matters, and because of your leadership, our scholars have that and so much more. Thank you for all that you've done for our community, and especially for our children and families. I urge you all to support Dr. Monares. You are doing a great job.
Thank you, Mayde. And, Mayde, I just want to thank you for your work on the Hessian Task Force. You do a wonderful work there. Thank you. Yep. Okay. Okay, so we have a couple of people online. Casey, is it Kayla?
Hello, um, Kayla Belladron here. I am from the Maine South area in Worcester. I have three children in Worcester Public Schools with a fourth child entering into the Worcester Public Schools this year. And along with what everybody else has said, um, speaking on the review for the superintendent, I can't see you guys right now. Um, I can't see her, but I see you. Like, we all see what you're doing, and it takes a village to do the work that you're doing and to keep building. As a parent of these three children already in Worcester Public Schools, my oldest going into ninth grade, I had started going to the, um, meetings with the superintendent. Not once have I ever been invited before from any other superintendent, so this is, you know, a first time that as a parent, we get to actually be heard on what's going on in the schools. And again, like everybody else has said, um, everything has been going really well with my children in school, and the superintendent has been listening to my voice and the concerns that I bring from the community. And I just want to say that she's doing an amazing job and that there's nothing about us without us, and we need to start thinking on a higher level than where we are in being bullies, like others have said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, is it Louise Burrell?
Yes.
Go ahead. Is your name and city residence and item number?
Louise Burrell. Um, I live here in Worcester, Mass. I'm here to speak on item K. I'm the superintendent. I'm not going to repeat what everybody else has said, but I am one of the parents that sat on the committee that our superintendent formed with us, um, to address the issues that we had within the school, um, department, within the schools, Worcester Public Schools. And she met so many of our complaints. Um, it was amazing. And not only did she just meet with our complaints, but she also tackled a big one, which is racial disparities that we have going on within our Worcester Public Schools. And I commend her for that, because that's a hard one to do, because nobody wants to admit the racial disparities that go on. She has also increased support for students, which is so great. She's increased after-school programs. She's went after everything that we've asked for. So I'm asking that our school committee support her, that our mayor supports her, because she has done great work, and we want to see her to continue to do this great work, and I thank you for this time.
Thank you, Louise. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting down. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, we have our, I'm sorry, we got the superintendent's report. I almost missed that. Report of superintendent, self-reflection, achievement of goals, school year 2023, 2024. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. First of all, I would, it doesn't feel right not to thank, um, the, the people who have said such kind things. So thank you for your kind words. As educators, we do what we do for children. We don't expect for any feedback that's positive such as this, but it always feels good when it happens. The best always feels good, and I'm looking at my cabinet team now when children come up to us and they find us in places, you know, and they're, they're grown adults. Unfortunately, I don't get that here in Massachusetts, because obviously I didn't teach here. But I, I just want to thank you for, for seeing the hard work, and I do not do it alone. I have a great team sitting here and amazing people who also work in our schools. But I do recognize that it is the role of the superintendent to build the culture and to develop, you know, those relationships. And so thank you. Thank you for seeing that. I also want to, um, welcome a new member to our cabinet team. I want to help welcome Dr. Shannon Conley. She was not expecting this, but she is our interim executive director since Dr. Sipple is now a superintendent in Malden. So welcome Shannon to the team. We're happy to have you part of it, your expertise, your voice. We know that we will continue to grow. So tonight, um, as heard, this is my annual self-reflection, and the purpose of the self-reflection is to give context to the, the materials and the evidence and artifacts that you received as a school committee today around three o'clock, if we got that all organized well. And I, I know we did, because, um, your school, your, your clerk is phenomenal. So if we can go to the next slide, and I'll go over the presentation objectives. So there are three. So there are three. I will review with you data and artifacts associated with the superintendent's goal for the 23-24 school year. You will receive some background information and necessary context so that you can fully understand my self-reflection. And you'll be provided opportunity to ask clarifying questions prior to the formal evaluation that you will be asked to conduct and get into Mayor Petty by August 2nd. And then the evaluation will actually take place, the August committee meeting. So that is the purpose for tonight, is for me to share with you what you will receive or what you actually have received today in terms of impact data and artifacts as it relates to the goals that were established in August of last school year, and then to be able to answer questions. So the next slide really is less for the committee, more of a reminder for the committee, but more for our community and those who watch. This slide comes from Charting the Course with the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Members. And when you go through Charting the Course, our committee members know that you receive information on, you know, your role as a school committee member. And the role, the ideal state of a school committee is to set goals, identify budget to support those goals, monitor progress, and then ensure alignment between what the school committee says the goals are, how the resources are allocated, and policy alignment. So that's the ideal state of a school committee. The next slide also comes from the Charting the Course with the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Members. And this is to, again, for the community as much it is for school committee members just to be reminded about the roles and responsibilities of a school committee versus the superintendent. So if we go through on the lighter blue side, the role of the committee is governance. That's, you're elected to be the governing body for schools, for the school district. You do that by establishing those goals or, as this says, the ends, the results, through identifying mission, vision, goals, policy, and budget. So it's really the what. What are we going to do in the school district? Why do we do it? How is it linked to what the community says is needed, what families are asking for, what research says, and how much money will be allocated? You, as a school committee member and as a governance team, serve as the bridge between the community and the superintendent. And you are the authorizers, right? You vote and then you monitor. So the evaluation of the superintendent is part of that monitoring piece of the role of the committee. On the other side is the role of the superintendent and the team that I lead, which is the management of the goals that the school committee has set. And so, again, August of last school year, the school committee at that time established goals. Then it's up to the superintendent to determine the means. How are we going to implement these goals? And that's through strategies that are put in place, action plans, developing regulations for our schools and our district departments, and establishing procedures. So if you think about, if committee is the what, why, and how much, the superintendent determines how we're going to do this, who will do it, when will it happen, and where will it happen? That's the role of the superintendent and their management team. The superintendent serves as the bridge between the staff and the committee. And as the superintendent, you bring recommendations forward. So the most recent recommendation was the budget, which was recommended, and you authorized it or you voted for it. And now it'll be my responsibility with my team to implement what was authorized. So committee is governance, superintendent is management. What brings us together so that we're a high-functioning team is the trust and respect that we build with each other, how we treat each other, how we ask questions of each other, and how we listen to each other. That's what the community watches for. Because the community has voted the committee to be the governing body. The community has voted the committee to select the superintendent. And then the community expects that the superintendent works with the committee to implement those goals. It is a dance that we, as both superintendent and committee members, work together on. And so, in this evaluation process, just a reminder that your work is, you set goals. And now I'm going to tell you how well I think the district has done on those goals with my leadership as the, kind of the thread that moves it forward, right? And maybe the gas that fuels the engine. So with that, we'll go to the next slide. So the goals for the superintendent are based off of four standards, and those standards are here. You will receive, or you received in the document for evaluation, a document that is provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And you will evaluate me in these four areas of the standard. So I'll read the full standard just so you have it. But again, you'll have this as part of your evaluation process. So standard one is instructional leadership. And what it says is, "The educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling." There are indicators within that. It is those indicators that are focus indicators, and you receive that in your documents today. And I will share with you, again, how the district has progressed in those. The second standard is in the area of management and operations. This tends to be a lot around human resource work and business services. So the language says, "Promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing, and scheduling." So there is a goal around that, and you will see evidence to support that. Third standard is around family and community engagement. And the language says, "Promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and district." And finally, the last standard is around professional culture. This one is about, the language says, "Promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff." So as I go through the goals and the evidence, I have also linked to it the standard that it's associated with. And you'll be able to refer to that in your evaluation document. So let's get into what the superintendent goals are. So next slide. So Goal One. One more click. Thank you, Casey. Again, these goals were established collaboratively with, I do recognize it was a different school committee. They are the goals for the last school year. So district goal number one. By June 30th, 2024, ensure a district-wide system for recruitment, hiring, and retention of a talented, cultural, and linguistically competent workforce, doing this through a culture of belonging and authentic engagement as measured by a 10% narrowing of the gap between overall student and staff demographics. So when the school committee approved this, we said that some examples of impact evidence would be a 10% narrowing of staff and student diversity gap. You will see that in future slides. Decreasing staff grievances at the school level, you'll see that, and an increase in our BIPOC staff. You'll also see that in future slides. Product evidence, because last committee, we, I really wanted to emphasize that I will not just be bringing forward evidence that's product-based. There's going to be impact that's going to start happening in the district. So the product that I submitted for the evaluation for this particular goal is the development of a Worcester Public Schools Staff and Cultivation Guidebook. The rubric or the alignment to those standards that I just listed, it's standard number two, Management and Operations. And there's two parts to that. There's the management and development piece, and there's law, ethics, and policies. And so I speak to that in my summary that I provided to you today. But the next slide starts to show some data impact. So we said we were going to decrease the gap between our student demographics and our staff. And when we said this, we said we're going to do it by 10%. And what we didn't calculate in is that the student demographics are constantly changing. And so although we increase the percentage of students, of staff, by eight point, goodness, where is it on here? Eight point four seven percent, I believe, something like that. The student demographics continue to increase as well. So we didn't make that 10% overall, but we did grow our overall demographics, as you can see. We just need to keep double-timing it. So we're about, just about 9% that we met. We have increased our diversity in our staff. It's just our student diversity continues to grow too, which is a great thing. So we'll keep working on that. How did we do this? We did this by pipeline development, by partnering with our universities, by having intentional focus on revamping our procedures when we are interviewing individuals and making sure that our pool is reflective of our community to the best possible, and then heavy recruitment. So we will keep doing that. We're also really, when it comes to pipeline development, we're looking at within our own community and people who are already working for us. So families, parents who are working for us in different positions, we tap them and we say, "Have you thought about going and earning a degree? And we can help you along that way. We can help you pass these tests. We can do things with you. We want you to continue to grow." And we're not doing that just for parents. We're doing that for individuals who work for us, and we want to continue to grow them. So that's starting to take traction, and we're going to keep working on that. That's staff diversity. I think, just because I want to make time, I want to go through all of this, if that's okay with everybody, and then come back for questions? Okay? So please just hold your questions as we go through it. So 10% was the goal. Didn't quite make the 10%. We're about 8.47. Yes, 4.7, 8.47. The next slide is a data point that we're very proud of. You actually saw this in May. This is the decrease of the number of grievances. So as you know, grievances are contract violations that we, in different parts of the district, it always starts at a school or at a department level. And then if it cannot be rectified at that lowest level, then it starts to move up the chain. When a supervisor has, and it's always, I always believe it's unintentional, but has violated the contract, then what we're telling our employees is, "Yes, we have a contract with you, and it's actually a contract that the employee organization enters in with you as the school committee." And we're saying, "So we have a contract with you, but it really doesn't matter, because we're going to do..." That's the way it's perceived. Not that it's done intentionally, but that's the way it's perceived. So we have been very intentional about making sure our administrators understand what's in the contract and that if there is a grievance, that we take care of it at the lowest level, because the relationship is at the school level or the relationship is at the department level. And we want those relationships to stay strong. So you can see that this school year, we've had 12 grievances. And this is as of, I think, the end of May. Is that accurate? I think there's been one grievance since then, but three grievances since then, but they've been rectified. So, and as a committee, you have not had any grievances that have come to you. So I do my best to take care of things at my level, if it comes to me, because I don't think that you should have to correct something that we should have fixed along the way. So we're very proud of that decrease in the amount of grievances. Not only does this take care, like, really help to create that sense of belonging and authentic engagement that we're saying we want for our staff, I mean, for our children and our families, but for the staff as well. But we save money on litigation, or the decrease of litigation. So that's important as well. So we've had 12, 15 grievances now this school year. Still a huge decrease in where we were when I first arrived. The next slide goes into cultivation and retention. And so you can see, we have, we continue to retain 95.7% of our staff. And of our new hires, we're at 93.4%. So we're very pleased with that staff retention. This is really important to the overall health of an organization of a school district. We invest in people. We get, you know, we start talking the same language, if you will. And we want to keep them with us. That's why this budget season was so difficult, because we knew there were people we had already started investing in, and yet we... Is there something wrong with this slide? Okay, all right. So that's staff retention. Additionally, and you will get copies, you get access to this cultivation guidebook in the documents that I shared with you. This guidebook is intended to, and so this is the evidence impact or product evidence. The guidebook is for our administrators to help them at their school level and in their departments to follow the procedures, the state and federal guidelines, the local guidelines around hiring, retaining, supervision, all these things in one-stop shops. So there's links within this document. And again, you'll have access to that. But this was really important because as we want to decrease grievances, we want to increase retention, we want to diversify our staff, the people who are leading our schools and our departments need these tools so that we're not doing things kind of willy-nilly, right? We need to be doing them in sync with each other. And so developing a guidebook was very important. The team makes fun of me, because we have so many guidebooks now and playbooks and roadmaps. But we have so much written now that we are clear on where we're going, which is incredibly important. That takes care of that slide or the part of this information on the, I'm sorry, Goal One, which is the district goal. What you'll also see in the evidence that I provided for you is the number of BIPOC individuals. You'll see that as some additional evidence that is in the packet that was sent to you today. The next slide goes into the second district goal. Now, just a reminder, as a superintendent, I'm required to have one district goal, one student goal, and one professional goal. But because Worcester has such a dire need when it comes to facilities, we, I said to the committee at the beginning of last school year, "We need a second district goal, and it needs to be around facilities." We can't ignore this very important piece. So this is the second district goal, which is, "By June 30th, 2024, was to strengthen maintenance protocols and implement school safety recommendations to guarantee the continual modernization of all Worcester Public Schools facilities, cultivating an environment that is both secure and supportive of learning by building capacity and valuing knowledge as measured by 100% completion of the highest priority emergency projects identified through the safety audit." So the safety audit is our guiding tool as it relates to this particular goal. The impact evidence, you will see when I get to the next slide. I'm going to show you that the highest priority was actually the installation of vestibles at identified schools. I'm not going to share what those identified schools are, that this is a safety thing, but I want you to see what we're putting in place. They will be there before the start of the school year. We've already started some of them. The product evidence, so I said we were going to create a system to collect and monitor the safety trainings and drills. We didn't have a system to do that, so we have developed that. And so I'll give you a snapshot of what that looks like. And this aligns to, again, standard two, Management and Operations, but specifically the environment. So the next slide are pictures of a vestibule at one of our highest-needs locations. So let me just talk through this a little bit. So without that extra lining of windows right there, individuals would come down to the first door and get buzzed in, and then they could, they would enter. But we had to count on them to go up the stairs where that open door is. And, no, that's not where the open door is. I'm on the, there's an open door. You can't see it right there. There, that they, we would need them to go up to the office. But what they could do is they could go anywhere in the school, because there wasn't a direct path to making sure that the school is safe. So what the vestibule does is it tracks the person. So they come in, they get buzzed in the first time. They come in, there's another buzzing system. They get buzzed in the second time, and they can only go up the stairs. And the stairs takes them to the front office. What that does is that creates a second barrier of safety for any potential negative intruder that might want to come in. And we don't like to think that we have to do that at our schools, but we live in a reality where we do. And so what the vestibule also does is because it's put in a place, because someone might say, well, why don't you just put a person down there and then we're fine? We've got someone checking. But we just went through a major budget crisis. We don't always have money to put somebody down there and someone might get pulled somewhere else. So this stops that from happening and this is a more permanent solution. So we will have all of these vestibles and we don't have a whole bunch of them needed, but these were the highest priority ones that were identified in the safety audit. And those will all be in place before school starts. And so we're, we're happy about that because it gives a greater sense of security and safety, not just for the children there, of course, for the parents, but also for the staff that works there as well. So this has, this portion of the, the goal has been met. The next slide just gives a snapshot of the system to monitor safety drills. So when I arrived to Worcester, I asked what our system was to know in our 50-some schools, how do we know that drills are happening regularly? What is our system for monitoring that? And we didn't have one. And so we now have developed this system where we can, the director of safety at any time can pull up this, this dashboard and see which schools have not done a, a practice drill and, and go and have that conversation with the executive director and that principal. So we have a way of not only holding people accountable, but holding ourselves accountable. You can see that we've got fire drills, bus drills, standard response protocol drills and medical response drills. This is a snapshot of it that actually that I know this picture was taken midway through the year, this school year, just to give you an idea that we have developed this drill. And I'm, I'm grateful for the director of safety for taking this task on. So the two pieces of evidence that were submitted are these two pieces of evidence. Oh, no, I, I actually have one more piece that was not part of the evidence. And I do want to remind again the committee that the, the evaluation process requires that I submit one to three pieces of evidence for each goal, one to three pieces. So I was, I made sure that I had sufficient evidence to, for you to be able to evaluate. Not overburdening, but enough that you can evaluate. The next slide is something that we started this school year that next year I will have more data on. And we have shifted over to a new work order program. It's called Operation Hero. And the purpose of this work order program is to be able to provide more timely feedback to not only our facilities department, but also to our school leaders. There's nothing more frustrating as a principal, I remember being a principal myself, submitting a work order and waiting and waiting and waiting for something to happen. And it could go on forever and you start to feel like it just goes into this black abyss. And, and it's not because the facilities isn't working very hard. That's not what it is. There just needs to be that feedback of information. So the Operation Hero provides that. We piloted it this year. We'll have that in place for next school year and we'll be able to bring data to the committee as the committee so chooses. This is very much a management piece of evidence for us to make sure that our schools, our, our facilities department is responsive to schools. And if they're not, that the schools know where it is in the process. Because unfortunately, facilities just don't work as easily as we want them to. For those of us who own homes, we know that we think we're going to be able to do one thing and five more things happen as a result. And then you're waiting for something to be delivered and all that good stuff. Unfortunately, that's what happens in schools too. But we want people to, to have communication. So this is an extra piece of information just for the committee, kind of a glimmer of hope as we work into next school year. I'm going to move on now to the student goal. This is going to be a lot of information. I hope I don't like overwhelm you too much because there's a lot of data to share. And, and we're, we're pleased with where we're going. And I, so let me just share what, remind you of the goal. So by June 30th, 2024, collaboratively lead school teams in identifying using multiple sources of evidence to assess, respond and improve outcomes in all schools with an intentional focus on historically underserved youth. I'm going to pause there because Mayor Petty asked me today, and I think it was just such a good question. Rachel, how did you decide historically underserved youth? Did we determine that? We did not as a committee. We said this would be the goal and then we didn't talk about anymore. So I went with what the data has always shown in Worcester in terms of the gap between how the whole district is doing and then how certain groups of students are doing. Because we don't want to, we don't want the data to, we don't want to show that we're increasing, but then you look at certain groups of kids and they're not. That's not being, you know, honest and transparent. So as a committee, you may want to say to me, these are historically underserved groups you want to see and, and we can move forward in that. But for this evaluation, I chose four groups and we'll look at them shortly. So back to the goal. So by building capacity and valuing knowledge, authentic engagement and a sense of belonging. So how are we going to measure this? Three big areas. Increase third grade reading performance as demonstrated by the STAR assessment from the end of the school year, 2324. So we use the beginning of the year, 2324 data to 2324 of the end of the school year this year. So we'll, we'll talk, I'll show you STAR. And then in the secondary, in my middle and high schools, increase the percentage of students in middle and high school who self-report. That's important. It's a self-reporting that they are engaged in schools as measured by this, the Worcester Public Schools Culture and Climate Survey, which is called Panorama. And then finally, increase the number of formerly limited English proficient students, F, F L E P. And we, the multilingual department has actually changed that language. We're calling them former English learners. And so I'll show you how we've increased that. So what's the impact data you're going to see? Those three pieces of data, plus I have a lot of data around DIBELS, which is really around student growth and early literacy that I'm going to share with you. Product evidence, I've just got screenshots of them in this presentation, but you have, you will receive access to the literacy guide, the data literacy guide and the data visualization guide. Our, our Dr. Andrade, who is here and his department has done a phenomenal job in pulling together my vision on what we can have in terms of data literacy and data dashboards so that the teams can collaboratively look at multiple pieces of data and can make the instructional decisions that are so important. The rubric alignment, there's quite a few in this one. And I want to remind the committee, the reason there's so much in this goal is because the committee requested that last, at the beginning of last school year. You wanted to see a lot more in the area of, of instructional leadership and the, the impact on students' outcomes. So this is linked to curriculum, assessment, data-informed decision-making and student learning. That's in the instructional leadership portion. And then in standard three, family and community engagement, sharing responsibility. So let's go to the next slide. We're going to start first with third grade reading performance. You're going to see two pieces of data. You're going to see STAR data and DIBELS data. Just one second, Casey, leave it right there for me. The STAR data is, I want you to think of that as reading achievement data. It is a broader review of how children are reading at grade level and it's their achievement data. The DIBELS is around reading growth and more discrete reading skills. Remember, we're only looking at third grade performance because that was the goal. So we have an 11% point increase on the STAR third reading grade level at, for children who are at or above benchmark from the beginning of the year till this school year. As, wait, yeah, as compared to eight and seven percent increases over previous years. We also have a 12% decrease and we want to see this decrease because this is about children who are below benchmark, a well below benchmark in DIBELS from the beginning of the year until the end of the year. So when you're below benchmark, we want to see those numbers decrease because that implies you're increasing. And we had a 12% increase on DIBELS for third graders reading at or above benchmark from the beginning of the year until the end of the year. Before I click the slides, I want to emphasize, these third graders were kindergarten children during the pandemic. So their kindergarten year was all virtual. That's really important to understand because if you logged into any online learning going on at that time, they were just little bobbleheads all over the place. I know I saw it in California. I know it was happening here. God bless the parents and everything you did during that time. So the first slide, go ahead and click that. It's the STAR data. So you can see that the, go all the way over to the third piece, school year 24. They started at 32%, those third graders, and they ended the school year at 43%. Those are the children who are at or above benchmark. We are very pleased with that because we can see the amount of growth that they've had. That is a really big jump for those particular children. We feel very good about them going into fourth grade. The, if you click on the next slide, this is DIBELS. These are the children, so again, DIBELS is looking at reading growth, more discrete skills. You can see that we decreased the amount of children on the well below benchmark and the below benchmark. And we have increased the number of children above benchmark. And at the children at benchmark, it's about the same. It's about 19%. Now you might say, well, that doesn't look good, Rachel. Many times, children who were in that at benchmark, they've actually moved over to the above benchmark and then we move children along the continuum, which is what we want to do. So we've got a decrease in well below and we have increases on the at benchmark or above benchmark. So what does that tell us? Our third graders going into fourth grade are much stronger than they would have been if we didn't do what we had done this school year with the, what we believe is the heavy investment in curriculum that supports the science of reading. These children, 32%, were reading at grade level at the beginning of the school year. Now we are at 43%. Now it is not as great as it was in the previous two years, but you can see how much further beyond, below they were. And that's what we want to focus on because we want to see, is this making a difference? Did CKLA and providing teachers with the resources start to make a difference? I don't know what would have happened if they didn't have those materials. I don't know if we would have caught children up from that 32%. So we, we have a higher growth in reading this school year than we have in the past. The next slide starts to go into the historically underserved. So I want you to remember, 43% of our, all of our youth are, are third graders. 43% of third graders are reading at or above grade level. When you click on the next piece, thank you, Casey, for helping me here. 13% increase on STAR for our Black and African-American third graders who are reading at or above benchmark. And an 8% increase on DIBELS for those children. So we're very happy to see that. You'll click and you'll see what the STAR data shows. So at the beginning of the school year, all the way over on the FAR, you can see they were at 30% who were reading at or above grade level. You see that? And then at the end of the school year, they're at 43%. We have, and then if you click again, you'll see that in DIBELS, now DIBELS again shows growth. At the beginning of the school year, the, the, these children were at 34% and now they're at 42%. So again, we're seeing the kind of movement that we want to see for the historically underserved. Now, if you compare this group to the overall district in STAR, the numbers are pretty close, right? We started at STAR, district-wide at 32% who were at below, or I'm sorry, who were at grade level or above. The Black and African-American group started at 30%, but they all ended at 43%. So this group, in the totality of them, are, there's no gap between how the district, the overall district is doing and the Black African-American scholars. I do want to point out, because I've spoken with families and community members, there has been an ask, and we are going to work on figuring out how to do this. Is there a way to distinguish families who are immigrant coming to the United States from other countries who might be identify or would self-identify as, as Black? How, can we disaggregate that from Black families who have, were born and raised in the United States? And is there a distinction there? And so we're going to start working on how can we look at that? We talked about it. We have to figure out how to do that, but we will be working on doing that. But right now, we're just looking at all of the families who identify themselves in this area. Okay? Next slide is the area that, I mean, there's, there's continuous work everywhere. Because although 43% were happy, we've seen growth, until we've got 100% of children reading on grade level, we're not satisfied. So I just want to put that out there for everybody. We want to move in the right direction, but we didn't get as much growth in our Latino, for our Latino scholars. So go ahead and click that. We have some. We have 7% increase on STAR for the Hispanic Latino third graders reading at or above benchmark. And we have 11% increase on DIBELS. Again, STAR is the achievement data for reading. DIBELS is the, the reading, growth reading. If you click on the next slide, you'll see. So you can see that at the beginning of the year, we had 23% of that student group reading at or above grade level. And at the end of the year, we had 30%. But district-wide, remember, we have 43. So we have not narrowed, that, that gap is not as closed as we want it to be. The next slide shows the percentage on DIBELS. This is a better story. And I, for me personally, knowing teaching and learning, the DIBELS gives me more hope because that shows me children's ability. They're learning how to read and, and they're getting stronger in their reading ability. It'll start to translate into the achievement data, but we have some more work to do in this area. So at the beginning of the school year, this group of students was at 30% and now they're at 41%. So you can see that's a nice trend, but we still have work to be done in this area. Next slide starts to go into program. So please don't assume that a Latino student is an English learner because that's not the case. Some English learners are Latino students, but we've got plenty of Latino students who English is not, is not their second language. It is their first language. So you, there might be a mix of children in here, but this is specific to children who we have identified as English language learners based off of a home language survey. If you'll click the slide, we're starting to see some increase. We had an 8% point increase, percentage point increase on STAR for our multilingual children. Again, these are only our third graders who are reading at or above benchmark. And we had a 13% point increase on DIBELS for that same group of students who are in third grade. Again, these were third graders who were virtual in kindergarten. So that is a really big deal. Next slide shows how they've done. We just have so much work to be done, right? Like, that's the problem. Not the problem, it's just the challenge. It is where we're at. So 14% were at, at or above grade level in STAR and at the end of the school year, it's 22%. So that's that 8% increase on STAR. This, a language learner can be someone who has come to the country and they've been here two years. It could be someone who's been here five years. They get all grouped into this one group until they are reclassified or what we call former English learners. The next slide goes into, again, the DIBELS. We see a nicer trend line where they were at 22% at the beginning of the school year and now they're at 35. Again, we're seeing growth for our language learners. And for children who are learning English while they are learning how to read in, in English, this is a nice trend. I just want to see accelerated. So this, I anticipate that this will be part of what I'll bring to you as committee members for potential goals for next school year. Next slide goes into how our children who are identified with special needs are. This is another area where we've had some growth, but it's kind of moderate. Now, go ahead and click on that. 6% increase on STAR for those third grade scholars who are identified on an IEP. And that IEP can include speech only. It can include students with disabilities. They could be in our autism program. This, this runs the gamut. They just, they're identified with an IEP. And then 10% increase on DIBELS for those same third graders. Click on the slide and you'll see very much like the English language learners, just, just so much work to be done in this area. So they started at 15% and now they're at 21%. That's in STAR. The next slide shows DIBELS. Not quite the same amount of percentage. They started at 13%, they're now at 23%. So we, we have, again, we have work to be done as it relates to what we do for our children who are learning English as a second language and children who are identified with special needs. Next slide. Now here's a different way of looking at the data. And I know it looks, I couldn't figure out how to have this fly in, so just go with me on this. And Casey, there's quite a few link, clicks. So if I'll just, I'll kind of ask you to click along the way, okay? So the first graph that's going to come show is third grade reading for, just to give you a picture of- for, just to give you a picture of how our third graders are reading. Think about the colors. The red is not good. They're below grade level, right? They're below grade level. Yellow is their, red is their well below grade level. Yellow is their below grade level. Green is that they're at grade level. And blue is that they're above grade level. So the three rows is where we were at the beginning of the year, where we were at the middle of the year, where we were at the end of the year. I want you to note that the number of children have increased. We started with one thousand five hundred and thirty children in third grade. We ended with one thousand five hundred and sixty. If you click... No, that's okay. Note the difference in the amount of children who, using DIBELS, are showing reading performance and improvement. And I want you to see that, that line that goes in there, how much we have decreased the amount of children who are, you know, below, below reading or well below reading. So we want to see that. That's exactly what we want to see. We want to see that, that the numbers moving to the, depending on how you're looking at it, to the right of the, the graph. The next slide shows you decoding, which is really our indicator of reading readiness. So if you click on that slide, first, let me tell you what these lines going through the colors are. When, when a child is already show they understand or they can demonstrate whatever skill was assessed there, they don't get tested on it again. So it just goes through and it shows it in a different way. But they are, they are included in the at grade level. So you can see here, go ahead and click once, that that circle is even bigger. These are the children who are on target to be on grade-level reading. They are showing dramatic improvements. And if you click one more time, and you can see how we've cut into the number, the children who were at well below. That's what we want to see for our children, right? That, that's, that's, and, and, and there's so much, our teachers work so incredibly hard. We do believe that providing them with resources that help them to teach children how to read was a piece of this pie, but it wasn't everything. We've got phenomenal teachers in our district. We've worked on, again, sense of belonging classroom environments that are very welcoming. This is what we want to see, and we're very, we're looking forward to what these fourth graders will be doing in the future. And how those, and, and we're already preparing to have conversations with our fourth-grade teachers. They're going to come in stronger, be ready. Let's not hold them back. So this is, this is another piece of really positive data for us. Now, the other side of it is, is there work to be done? Absolutely. There's still children that we have to get them up to grade level, but we are decreasing that amount. And so then it makes it more attainable for us as a district versus where they came in. Next slide. This talks about, this shows also growth in a different way using DIBELS. And so if we'll click on it, so I had to have Dr. Andrade speak to me a little bit about this. I was like, I don't know if I want to use this. It might be a little too much for people. So I hope it's not, because it took me a while to make, make sense of it. So there's the student growth and there's the DIBELS benchmark level. What we want to see, if you'll click, are the children in this one quadrant, right? We want them to have high growth, and we want them to be improving. You can see that the majority of our children are excelling. Forty-five percent are excelling on DIBELS third-grade reading, and twenty-nine percent are improving. We have five percent of the children who are either maintaining or slipping. So we've got to find out who those children are at the school level. The teachers need to know. I'm going to show you how we're going to, they'll know who those children are. And we've got twenty-one percent underperforming. But I'm going to tell you, twenty-one percent is a much more doable group than fifty-two, fifty-two percent or anything that we could be experiencing. So we are in a really good place again. Just another way to look at the DIBELS data. If you click, you'll see, I just aggregated the numbers. So thirty-four percent of our third graders are excelling or improving in their literacy abilities, seventy-four percent. And these students, again, spent their kindergarten year in virtual learning environments. So our educators, our principals, the, the tools that we've provided for them from the district level, the work of the Q teams, it is making a difference. And, and we want to keep making that difference for our children. Because we know if they are not reading at grade level by the end of third grade, it just makes it so much harder for them. The next, that's all reading. I know, I told you, it's going to be a lot. Then we go into the secondary engagement. So as a reminder, on this one, it was using Panorama, which is a self-reported tool that we give to seventh through twelfth-grade students. And, and on that, go ahead and click. Not quite the same kind of increases that we saw in the reading, the third-grade reading. We had a two percent point increase on Panorama for our middle-school students. We had a four percent increase for our high-school students. We did see an increase for our Black African-American language learners and students with special needs, higher than the district average. So that's good. So the next slide shows you what that looks like. So the middle school, they started at twenty-two percent. They, and this is around student engagement, and they increased to twenty-four percent. The high school, twenty-one percent, and they increased to twenty-five percent. Let me give you just an example of what the questions that we asked, that the assessment asks for the student engagement. And it's on a Likert scale, so going from extremely excited to slightly excited. One of the questions was, how excited are you about going to class? Extremely excited, slightly excited, somewhat excited, not excited, quite excited? That's what they, they had to rate themselves on. How often do you get so focused on activities in your class that you lose track of time? Almost never to almost always, and a five-point scale there. In your classes, how eager are you to participate? Not at all to extremely eager. When you are not in school, how often do you talk about ideas from your classes? Almost never to almost always. And then finally, overall, how interested are you in your classes? Not interested at all to extremely interested. And so it's the five-point scale along. So this is really about relevance in a classroom setting and, and the, the amount of current and active engagement that our youth are looking for, and our teachers are trying to balance, right? So we've got what they have to teach, and then the context of a child's life and finding that in between. So we've got some improvement there, but we know we have increases to make in there. The next slide shows sense of belonging. Oh, I'm sorry. Not yet. You're, you're fine, Casey, though. So this is then the student groups. So you can see that all of the groups are higher than the district average, which was twenty-five, with the exception of our Latino youth. They're at twenty-three percent. And so that's a big portion of our district. That's almost half of our district. So if they're not feeling engaged, no wonder our numbers aren't growing as a district, right? So happy to see our Black youth more engaged. Happy to see our, our English learners, our students with disabilities. That's wonderful. Want to spend time, want our schools to spend time, you know, with our Latino youth. And, and, and not solely them, but if they grow, then the district grows, right? So it's a balance of that. But data is really important for us to understand what is working and what's not. I do want to note that, that the high schools are where last school year, we, the investment was put in for the Dean of Students and the Climate and Culture Assistance, and we had a more growth there than we did at the middle school. So that may have something to do with it. We'll see in the next slide. So the next slide shows sense of belonging. We had a one percent increase on Panorama for our middle-school students, two percent increase for high-school students. And again, the, the Black African-American, our language learners and students with special needs also had a higher increase than the district average. So if you click on that slide, you'll see that the middle school started at thirty-two percent. They're at thirty-three percent. High schools were at thirty-one percent. They're at thirty-three percent. I'll, I'll share with you the questions that were asked on the sense of belonging. Again, same Likert scale, one to five, and everywhere in between. How well do people at your school understand you as a person? How connected do you feel to the adults at your school? I remember, we're asking this of teenagers, so let's, you know, they're teenagers. But we want to know how they feel. How much respect do students in your school show you? How much do you matter to others at this school? And overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? And so, you know, it could be belong a little bit to completely belong. How much do you matter? Matter a little bit to tremendously, tremendous amount. Connectedness, slightly connected to extremely connected with adults at the school. So there's a lot of data that we can really dig into this, and we'll be providing it to our schools so that they can continue, continue to work on it. And they'll get their data by the school. So go ahead and click there, and you can see, again, the, the student groups. The district is at thirty-three percent. We can see that our Black African-American is at thirty-five percent. A good, happy to see that. Hispanics at thirty-one percent. Don't like to see that less than. English learners, thirty-six percent. Students with disabilities, thirty-seven percent. So it's, it is mixed. I would again say, when we can further engage our Latino youth, we will not only see it increase for them, but we will see it increase for the district. And, and that needs to continue to be a priority. Final piece of data to show, next slide. Our, our former English learners, FEL, which, when I first developed this goal with the committee, they were referred to as formerly limited English proficient FLEP, but now they are FEL. So really happy to share this information. Go ahead and click. The percentage of reclassified former, former English learners is projected to be the highest since the pandemic. If you click, you'll show that we have a ten percent increase as a district. We have successfully reclassified seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight youth. That's ten percent. You can see that we actually have less children who are identified as English learners based off of our current Worcester Public Schools numbers, because we don't have official numbers from DESI yet. But what's so important about this is when a child enters middle school and high school, if they are still identified as an English learner, they lose access and opportunity to some elective classes because they must still take an English as a second language course. And so we want to continue to honor their home language, and we want them to have the, the English so that they can access all these other programs that we have for them. Of course, we don't want to reclassify children too quickly, because then they will not be successful. So it is a balance. But when we can successfully reclassify, we need to do that. And the way that we made this happen this year was just to start to share the data with our schools. At the beginning of the school year, we created spreadsheets, and we gave them to the schools. And we said, these are the children that are right on the cusp. They're ready to reclassify. They only need maybe a writing portion, or they need some additional work. We did some tutoring with them, and we can see that it improved greatly. This makes a world of difference in a child's life who's an English learner. So really happy to see this, and we'll continue to grow this. The next slide is just, our, our multilingual program is just so incredibly proud of the SEAL of Bilinguism, and we wanted to share this with you. It's not necessarily part of my evaluation, but it is a success. You can see that we have successfully, over time, re-provided a SEAL of Bilinguism for more and more youth. This school year, two-hundred-and-seventy-six in total. Seventeen language tests, languages tested. I'll say that that, that ceremony is just so special. And it's not, it's special because you see the passion of the educators at the school. They're so incredibly proud of the work that they're doing with the youth. The children are so proud of the languages that they speak. Some of them are getting SEALs in more than one language. It's just a wonderful experience. And so we're very, very pleased. I mean, look at that, fifty-six with the SEAL of Distinction. That's, that's, that's wonderful. Bless you. So this is just an extra growing impact of the SEAL of Bilinguism. Next slide, still related to the same student goal, are the artifacts. So go ahead and click on that. I'm just giving you a, a picture of this amazing dashboard that has been developed. When I started, actually, it wasn't. Dr. Andrade reminded me. When I was interviewing to be the next superintendent of Worcester Public Schools, I started asking about data literacy then, and the dashboards and what we have. And so to see this come to fruition now is, is, it's just wonderful. Because I don't want, teachers, principals, we, they don't need to spend time trying to pull data together. They need to be able to click, and the data comes together for them so they could do something with it. And so Worcester has developed our own dashboard. And, and the team presented at, where, Infinite Campus? Earlier this, no, I guess, spring of this year. And they were like the, the, the all-stars of this national conference because of what, was it national? Regional conference, because of what they've been able to do. And so what this will provide for schools is, you know, that, that five percent of children in third grade that it said they were slipping in reading? They'll be able to find out who those children are at their school and make a difference for them. Not wait. They'll be able to find out what that twenty-one percent is. They'll be able to see, is attendance and, and the assessment, are those two having, are there problems there? So they'll be able to cross-triangulate data. It's a really big deal for a classroom teacher, for an instructional coach, for a principal at the district level. So we're very grateful for that. And the tools that they not only developed this, that's interactive and customizable, but then they also developed what you have access to, because I included that as my artifacts, the guidebooks on how to understand how to use this, with videos in it so that people can go back to it, because I don't know how many times I would have to have a video for it. And they have additional templates. So we have a robust data system in Worcester Public Schools now, and we have just amazing people behind the scenes making it happen. Very happy with that. Next slide. So I want to just give you a little, I'm, I know, it's a lot. Okay, good. Glimmer, glimmers of what we're calling acceleration, because there's some good hope on the horizon. And I'm saying it's a glimmer because we don't have the official data back from DESI. So we don't know. We won't have that official data until probably end of September. But we looked at some, our data points, and we've got some really good possibilities. So the next slide, Casey, is going to be a few clicks. So I showed you how third graders were doing. Now I want to show you how our elementary schools are doing on reading performance. So go ahead and click there. You'll see, click one more time, that our kindergarten, first, and second-grade youth, the end-of-the-year reading is dramatically increased compared to where they were at the beginning of the year. Look at those kindergarteners. Nineteen percent when they started. They're at fifty-two percent. And I saw it in classrooms. I saw children sitting there and reading with each other. It was the most amazing thing to watch, and it was towards the end of the school year. That's just not, you don't typically see that in an elementary classrooms and, and in a kindergarten classroom, and you don't see the amount of children that I saw. So that was very exciting. Dr. Morse was with me when we saw that. Look at the, the first-grade students. Look at the second-grade students. That's, that's a huge improvement. That's the work of our teachers. That's the science of reading and practice. That's holding, using data to really inform and make a decision. I'm not going to talk about third grade, because I already did. Now I'm going to say, and you should be looking at this too. Go ahead and click. Uh-oh, look at our fourth graders, right? Those babies were first graders when we were on virtual learning. They need some work. We, we have a plan. We, we've, we've, we were with, we will bring in a company, we're in conversation right now, to provide some tutoring for these children. And if you click on fourth and, or fifth and sixth, go ahead and click again. We see increase, but we don't see it like we do at the younger grades, right? So I like, I always like to see the, the correct trend. But when we bring in this, this company, and we're, you know, we don't think it's a panacea, but we need some intervention. We can't expect our classroom teachers to do everything. So we've got to have some additional supports. We have an intervention that's already part of the CKLA program. But we're going to identify which children are really struggling, and we're going to get them even more. Because we don't want those fifth and sixth graders to go into middle school and be struggling. So our, our plan is to support them there. So nice glimmer of hopes at the younger grades. We need to keep that momentum. Our, our, our first-grade teachers are going to have half their kids coming in reading. They've got to keep pushing them, right? Our second-grade teachers, same thing, almost sixty percent of their class. That's a big difference. So we need to keep moving the target and, and supporting them and, and moving things along. And you know, I just want to emphasize also, I just remembered, the committee took action last year, and we put an instructional aid in every kindergarten classroom. That helps too, because we were able to do small-group instruction. So there's a lot of resource allocation that makes a difference. This is a glimmer of hope, and it tells us where interventions need to be. Next slide. Go ahead and click. Now, now I'm going to ask you to twist your brain. Bing. Now we have to look at below, right? Children who are performing below. So this is- So this is, this is looking at our DIBELS data. You can see in DIBELS and kindergarten, go ahead and click again, I apologize. And well below, below benchmark in kindergarten, sixty-four percent of our children were when they started. Now it's at thirty, thirty-six percent. I guess I should look at mine right here so I could see it. Yes, thirty-six percent. That's huge. We've had a huge decrease in the number of children that are well below benchmark. You can see it in first grade, you can see it in second grade. Again, that's what we want to see. That's the kind of trend you want to see as we move forward. I'm not, again, I'm not going to talk about third grade. We've talked about that. Moving along the continuum, fourth grade. Not as excited, right? I'm happy that we're starting to see less children, no, fourth grade is our issue. We know that. They were first graders. Fourth grade is our issue. So we need to do something for those fourth graders. And then fifth and sixth grade. Worried a little bit about my fifth graders. They were in, at the end of first grade and then in second grade, in the first grade virtual and then second grade virtual. And we can see that they're struggling with reading, right? So we've got some things and again, we will be putting some interventions in place to further support them. We are in conversation right now with a company to support that. And that data dashboard that Dr. Andrade and his team developed will help us to identify exactly which children those are. Same thing for our sixth grade. So fifth and sixth grade, we see slight decreases, but they're not monumental. But you can see at the beginning and the early years, we're making change. So that's, we're happy to see that. The next slide goes into, and I know there's a lot of text on here and I'm almost done. Initially, when I brought the the goal to the committee, I had talked about moving schools out of the lowest performing as based on DESI criteria. And then the committee reminded me, you won't have that data until, until October. So we can't use that to evaluate you. So we took that out as, as an evaluation tool. But we did look at multiple pieces of data. So we have eighteen schools right now that are on, are, that DESI identifies as needing the greatest growth. And in looking at multiple pieces of data about those schools, so this current year's data, well, just last school's year's data, the school year we just ended. We've got twelve out of those eighteen schools who show improvement on a variety of student performance indicators. So that includes both reading and math benchmark performance, and that's using STAR, growth, chronic absenteeism and graduation rates. So we're happy to see twelve of those eighteen schools making some very nice progress. We anticipate some of those schools might come off the list, but we won't know until DESI puts that list out. Of those eighteen schools, eleven out of eighteen have shown moderate to high growth. So that's a really nice piece, moderate to high, on both the STAR English Language Arts and Math end of the year benchmarks. That is very much tightly correlated to how they'll do on MCAS. So again, we have some glimmers of hope. We think those eleven schools will, may come off the list. Seven out of the eighteen have shown moderate to high increase of students predicted to meet or exceed expectations on MCAS math. And six out of the eighteen show moderate to high increase percentage of students predicted to again, meet or exceed expectations on MCAS Language Arts. So looking forward to getting that data. It's all predictive at this point. We don't know, but we wanted to see how our schools are progressing based off a variety of indicators. And we've got some movement. What would I attribute this to? Quite a few things. We've got curriculum maps at the district level that we've further revised and augmented. We've got our Q teams that are like Johnny on the spot when schools need something. We've developed additional high-quality resource materials that we've purchased for the schools. And then it's the work that our, our principals do with their teacher teams, with the Q teams and with the focus instructional coaches that is constantly improving outcomes for youth. So that ends all of the data. Next slide, yes, I know. I could have, I could have given you so much more, but I did not. The last goal is the professional goal. And this goal was my participation in the new superintendent induction program, year two, that I would have participated, I would complete it and I would submit all the required projects required. And the required project was that of a strategic plan that was done in in December of this last school year and board approved. What I also said I would provide as impact evidence for the committee is a way to monitor our key performance indicators so that we don't have a plan and then we're not monitoring how we're doing and then five years from now, we have not achieved what we promised the community that we would. So the rubric alignment to that is the standard for professional culture, commitment to high standards and shared vision. The next slide is just a picture, go ahead and click, of the strategic plan. I gave you a link in the document I provided to you this afternoon of our strategic plan. I know it's not new to any of you, but just to remember that we have that. It has a variety of promises to our community. It's based off of the entry plan themes that I acquired. And then we have developed a key performance indicator timeline. So if you'll click there, go ahead one more time. So we have this very robust way of tracking the metrics of what we say we're going to do. So we've got the strategic plan and the strategic plan, we've got promises. And then we said, and on the promise, this is how you can measure us. Now we've got a way to track that. And then if you click again, and because Dr. Andrade and his team understand that communication is so important, he also created definitions for anyone who wants to follow along with this key performance indicator. So this indicator timeline is how often we will be collecting the data and, and using that information at the school level and at the district level. And then projecting, you know, presenting to you as I have done in the past through the report of the superintendent. So the final slide, I think there's two more, is just a reminder that we often want to say that success is just straight line, put a plan in place, go, all works out. And we know that that's just really, that's just not the way it is. Because if it was, every district in the United States would have a hundred percent of their children reading, writing, doing math and everything at grade level. And, and, and life would be very easy, right? And not just in schools, but everywhere else. Instead, we have lots of ups and downs. And, and the data that I shared and the work that we've done this school year, we've got growth and then there's, there's still opportunities for improvement. But I am pleased with the amount of work that's come out of the district and, and the overall culture and belief in what we can do, the reflection on when we don't meet a target, being okay with that and growing from it. Because at the end of the day, next slide, it always comes down to them. It always comes down to the children that we serve. These are new graduates from Dougherty High School. And we have to be, as the adults, willing to ride that roller coaster of the squiggle and go with the ups and downs and not point fingers because that doesn't help anybody. But instead say, all right, that didn't work. What do we need to do next time? Where did we miss the mark and how do we get better about it? That's where Worcester Public Schools is going and will continue to go under my leadership. And so those smiles are always happening at the end. So go ahead and lots for you to process. I apologize for the length.
I'll be honest with you, I just want to thank you for the information. And so I think we discussed probably when you started, like the demographics of our students and especially what I liked about this report, it shows the challenges ahead and it's not hiding anything. And it shows our success. I know you want to see better success, but it shows that we seem to be going, we are going in the right direction and and looking forward and when I, I chuckled, it was like, you might get more work out of this. Because I know I talked to you today, as you said, about demographics, you know, every demographic we have, whether it be gender demographics, immigrants coming into the city, even break down the immigrant population between countries. And, and every demographic we should have after DESI comes out probably with their final, you know, detailed information. But there was one thing I just quickly asked, I can't find the slide, but our student enrollment, I think it said it was like twenty-four thousand nine hundred something. Is that in October, is that what we had on October first? I thought we had a lot less, that's why it was.
That was just a snapshot of that particular day. Don't take that as, when did we take that picture?
I was just wondering if the immigrants are coming to the city.
June, early June, yeah.
Of this year, so.
But I mean, honestly, Mayor Petty, it's constantly.
I know people come and go. I thought it was substantially less than October first, no?
No.
No, we did the, I thought it was like twenty-four thousand two hundred or something, around there, yeah. So it has increased, so I'd be curious why that's.
Well, it increases and then it decreases. So we've watched it too.
Okay, well, just a funny question. So October 2nd is the date. You can give me your evaluations. I mean, August 2nd. And so I'd like to get that so we can, I can have it ready for the, was it the sixteenth? August sixteenth for the, for the public and the committee. And so I can put everybody's evaluation together, what we've done in the past. So it's a lot of work, so I know sometimes you get delayed. And I know people are on vacation, so I understand that. So we can work together. If you can't meet the August 2nd date, just let me know and we can work something out. I just need to try to get some people in so I can get it going, so. Okay, any questions, go. Member mailman?
Thank you, just a couple of questions. I love this, I love this sample key performance indicator timeline. That is really neat. We'll be looking forward to seeing that. Couple of quick questions. When we look at third grade reading and we see, what happens with slippage during the summer? I mean, does that bring us back to the starting point again? Or is it, is there any kind of consistent thing we can look at to determine that?
Through the chair. Well, to your second part, is there something consistent to look at? They'll be assessing using STAR again at the beginning of the school year. They'll be assessing using DIBELS. So there'll be, there'll be some slippage, but it won't take us all the way back to the starting point. And then we catch them up. Teachers are very, they know how, they're adept at doing that. You just weave the previous standards into the new instruction and you keep going. So we'll see a little bit, but it won't be, we won't revert back to where they were at all.
Okay, thank you. I saw some community chatter this week too about parents understanding where the kids are. Can you just address that for a moment? Because I don't think they get these scores, is that correct?
Through the chair to member mailman. I saw some of that too and so I started asking. And so we're going to figure out. I, I don't even think I've asked Dr. Morris yet. I was speaking with Ms. Boss one day and I was like, is it on our report cards? What do we do? So we'll, we'll look into it. We need some consistency because what I think I understand is some get it, some don't. It may be based off of the principal. I, I'm not sure yet, so we're going to look into that.
Thank you.
Ma'am, Benanda?
Okay, spent this whole week looking through the data. I really think that it's really important to evaluate the superintendent on the completion of their goals as stated. So I'd like to address the goal regarding grade three reading performance and the increase of students in grade seven through twelve who self-report their measures. So the first slide I want to report is the third grade reading performance. It's been, it's very difficult to analyze this data for impact, really when the detail, a lot of details are missing. So I have a couple of questions on it. Dr. Montrez, can you explain the difference between the STAR and DIBELS? How students take them and how they're assessed?
Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair. So the, both of them are assessed digitally. And, and they, as I said, the difference between the STAR and the DIBELS is STAR is basically looking at reading comprehension, vocabulary development. If you're in the younger grades, it's going to look at some decoding. And then the DIBELS goes much more discreetly into the reading skills and based off of the science of reading. So can you, the phonemic awareness, the phonics, which is a slew of different skills within phonics that I'm not going to go deep, deeply into. But as you know, there are different ways that letters come together for phonics. Then there is the reading, the vocabulary development. There is the reading comprehension. And then there is, I believe in DIBELS, there is a spelling piece to it as well, or word recognition. It's word recognition. So DIBELS is much more discreet and gets to the root needs of what a child would need in their reading growth. Whereas STAR is much more, as I said, more about reading achievement and your ability to read overall.
So my understanding of it is also that DIBELS is done with the teachers sitting down with the student at the beginning, middle and end of the year and recording on several skills that the students are doing as far as reading goes. Compared to STAR's, which, you know, was a test that you can compare yourself to students across the nation. Am I correct on that?
Ma'am Superintendent?
So DIBELS is administered individually. I've seen teachers do it in classrooms many times. DIBELS has a cross-the-nation too, but we don't use it that way. But it's used throughout the nation in that, in that, in that manner. Member Benanda, what exactly are you looking for in terms of the?
Well, I guess the question is, I know in the goal, it states that we're going to be looking at STAR data and it's the beginning and the end, with the end of twenty-three to the end of twenty-four. So when I'm looking at the data, what's being reported is DIBELS is there and it's not in the goal. So I'm wondering, you know, why it was included in the evidence. And in looking at the third grade reading performance, and again, directly addressing the goal as stated, it was the end of twenty-three to the end of twenty-four. So I look back at twenty-two, because you provided that, thank you. It was forty-six percent. Now in twenty-three, we're going down to forty-five percent. And twenty-four, we are decreasing forty-three percent. So I did talk to Renaissance today. Renaissance is the people that we get our STAR data from. On my own district STAR data. Because I was interested in, is there another way of looking at STAR data that will actually give us more accurate scores on each of the students? And what they said to me today is that there's actually an SGP data that also comes out of STAR that will show individually for every single kid that takes the test. It shows how their low achievement, high growth, high growth, high achievement, low growth, high achievement, low growth, low achievement. So I also was wondering, I mean, I know your goal was to look at year end for twenty-three, twenty-four, which shows a decrease on third graders by two percent. Historically underserved, it also shows a decrease. It shows that in twenty-three, twenty-four, it went from forty-six to forty-three percent, which is, which is another three percent decrease. And I see that the percent of black African-American students at DIBELS, it only shows those above the benchmark. I was wondering why the other areas weren't shown. I think it only showed one end of year because my understanding is that this is the first year that everybody is using DIBELS again. Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct.
So that's why, but I was just curious as, you're showing DIBELS, even though it's not in the goal, probably just to provide us more information to compare STAR to? Is that why we're looking at DIBELS also?
DIBELS is a very nice indicator of student growth, as I've shared.
Right, it just wasn't in your goal. So that's why I was just wondering why it was there. So now we go on to historically underserved. We went from twenty-three percent to twenty-nine percent, right? This is Hispanic students at or above. And then to thirty. And then to 30 percent on Hispanic students. This is the, the, that was beginning of year, middle, and end. But if we look at the two, end of year, from '23 to '24, we have again a 3 percent decrease in students being at above the benchmark. When we go to historically underserved students for '23 to '24, there was a slight increase from 19 to 22 percent increase. And then the one about special needs, we had no growth at all, 21 percent, 21 percent. I'm just talking about the STAR data now. Then I'm looking at the one that is, again, DIBELS. And the one on decoding nonsense, word fluency. I don't know if you knew that there's a lot of literature on that that is actually questioning whether nonsense word fluency actually is a future indicator of reading. I'm not sure you knew that or why that information is being provided.
Through the chair, Member Benanda, you are welcome to evaluate me in the manner that you feel is appropriate. That is your choice as an individual committee member. I have provided the, the committee with the data to show that our children are reading more and reading at higher levels. If you choose to look at it in different ways, that is your, that's your purview as a committee member.
With due respect to you, I'm going by your goal. Your goal was clearly stated that it was going to be an increase in third grade reading. And it doesn't show that by the data by STAR. And that does, it does not show that by the data that, that you did provide.
Well, actually, it, you are correct that if we're going to compare from last year's children, who are a different set of groups, children to, in third grade, to that this year's, you're absolutely correct. However, when I look at the data and I see that the students started at a very low level and that we've increased that the way that we did on STAR, I would say that our children are reading better and I have increased, not me personally, because I don't do that. The teachers do that. We provide the support and the structure to do that, but that has increased. So again, there's different ways to look at the data. Again, you are welcome to evaluate me based off of the language on the goal that the school committee approved at the end, at this school year. And, and you will be one of, of nine who will be evaluating me.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure, figure this out, because I'm going just by your goal. The goal that you talked about, the quadrants, you said this was an example of one quadrant? Is that what you said?
Um, Ma'am Superintendent?
No, that is, that's not a quadrant. That is all third graders.
Say, can you say that again?
It's, that's not a quadrant of a, of school. I could see why that would be confusing. That is looking at the matrix and that, that particular, that's all of our third graders. And looking at how they're doing, and 74 percent of them are, as I said, the, showing substantial growth or at growth. So it's not a quadrant of schools.
I get what you're saying. So when I, so 45 percent are excelling and 29 percent are improving. But it could, they could be improving from any level, right? They could be improving from low, very low. They're improving from what level?
They are improving from below, below or well below. So if you look at that slide, you can see, if you go across low or below or well below, 29 percent of those youth are improving. These are all the third graders.
So I, you know, would have, I think that sentence, 70 percent third graders are excelling or improving, should probably say 45 percent are excelling and 29 percent are improving. I think to put it together in a sentence makes, when you first read it, at least when I first read it, without looking at the chart, seem like 74 percent were excelling and improving almost on the same level. That was, I thought that's, I agree with you. You thought this slide was confusing, so, so did I. The other question I had...
Member Benanda, just to clarify, it's not "and," it says "or."
Yes, but in the same sentence, it makes you think it's connected, that's all. So my other question is, going forward, right? Did you, would you ever think, or have you ever thought about using the STAR SGP to show actually the growth? Because you would get every student's growth. And it's a very reliable, you know, STARs, because you're compared to students that took the test at the same time across the country. It would be a really great way to show student growth. And you can get that report right out of Renaissance. Did you ever think of that for a future goal on, on third grade reading?
Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair, I actually think that that is what we use, is that correct, Dr. Andrade? I've seen graphs on it before. SPG, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Would that be great? Would you be able to give us a copy of that? Because I know it comes right out of Renaissance.
That's what was been, that's what was provided, correct?
I don't think it's SP, it doesn't say SPG on it.
Well, just because it doesn't say it, what doesn't mean that's not the data we pulled. I'll, I'll, I'll find out, Member Benanda.
Find out, thank you. And, and let me know on that, that's great. Let's see, my other question that I had from Panorama, which I really like Panorama, is what is statistically significant on those surveys for, for students in the middle and the high school? Is a 2 percent increase for middle schools and 2 percent for high schools on culture and climate? And a 1 percent significantly statistically significant to say there's been a positive change?
Yes, it's actually 1 percent. That would be statistically significant. That's both in the achievement data as well as in the climate and culture data.
Okay. And then my last question for you was on the FELLS. So on the FELLS, did this include where the kids that were student proficiency level one and two included on this, too?
Any child who met the criteria for reclassification was included in there.
So I was just wondering, I'm looking at this, I was wondering if the L tutors and the literacy tutors that you hired could have helped with the large number of students that were able to move up with reclassification? Because both of those groups were cut in a, in a budget. And I was wondering, what, what, is there a plan so that you can continue to grow in this slide?
There's absolutely a plan, and that will be to continue to use the data, identify what the pieces are that an individual child needs in order to reclassify. It typically is one component, and then you hone in on that, you target it, and you build that into your lessons, and then they reclassify. I just want to remind you that many of the, the tutor positions were vacant. So that's not what led, we don't believe that that was what was led to this. It was a intentional focus that we started in October of this school year, of this past school year, looking at the children who are on the cusp and providing for them what is needed so that they can reclassify.
And then the last question is, were there any, do you know if there are any FELLS that were able to earn the seal of illiteracy?
Ma'am Superintendent?
Not off the, the, not off my cuff, I'm, I don't. I would anticipate that that would be the case.
Yeah, because I'm looking at the large, large numbers. And I know from the past that not all schools participated to do the seal or seal with distinction. And I, I was happy to see the large numbers that are growing here, because I, I think it's a unique recognition. They get, I don't know if everybody else knows, but on their diploma, they have a special seal that says they got a sealed by literacy. And in some cases, they don't have to take more language when they go to college. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for students. And it also, you know, I agree with you, shows that in the West Public Schools, we value students speaking more than one language.
Okay.
And that's, that's the only thing that I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Member Biancaria?
Thank you. We did cover a great deal, thank you for the information. I did have a question. When you talk about the benchmarks and DIBELS and the elementary reading performance, when we did our budget a few weeks back, which was less than two months back, on page 13, it read that we had a reduction of 25 literacy tutors, 14 MCAS tutor positions, and seven ESL tutors. That was going to be a savings, 869,000. So we're almost at $1 million. You mentioned this evening twice in your presentation, if not more than that, that there was a company you were looking at. So what is the plan to continue improving what we're looking at for reading performance? And what, where is the company? What is the company? How much is it going to be costing us? And where's the money coming from? Because that funding was reduced, and we were told specifically that we didn't have that money and we laid people off. But now we're looking at a new company for tutors.
Um, Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair. So first of all, I want to be clear that the, the instruction always is the first step, right? The, the first strong instruction, so that you don't have to have tutors, so you don't have to do this outside of the classroom. That's what we want first and foremost. So we've provided our teachers with that, we continue to train them. And when I go into classrooms, I see them with the resources that they needed in order to teach children how to read. So that continues, and that will, that will continue into this next school year, especially as our teachers get more comfortable with the resources. At the beginning of this last school year, they had to hold the, many of them had to hold the teacher edition in their hands, because they were just trying to figure out how to use them. As the year progressed, they got more comfortable with it. And they'll be even better next year. When it comes to the, the tutoring, there was additional funds that were provided, as you know, at the end of this school year, at the last minute, from our city. And so we had to put money aside, we had to figure out what we were going to do, and we have budgeted accordingly. It is dramatically less than what it would cost if we had tutors, and we're going to be able to meet the needs of more children. There will be, we're not done with the contract, we're moving into the contract. And then whatever process we need to do to bring it forward for approval, that process will take place.
So where is the funding coming from that we were told we didn't have any?
Mr. Allen, if you could come forward and share, because this, we, we talked about this at the budget, was the additional funds from the, the city.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. And I think we also put this in the last, what's happening information to the school team members. The, what we did is we took the city's $1.8 million, used that to address some existing deficits, what we saw in McInnes-Vento and special education, our district tuition. And the balance of that, we use, we offset the city money to reduce some of our federal grant and school choice expenses that could be carried forward, that can be used then for these services.
Okay.
So when we're looking, thank you. When we are looking at what we are able to accomplish, are we looking at a contract that's going to have a one-year or a two-year, three-year? Have we determined what that timeframe is going to be?
Through the chair, we would only do a one-year. We want to make sure that it is having an impact. We would not enter into a multi-year contract.
Okay, I make a motion that we receive intimate detail of how that is occurring due to the fact that this was a big piece of what we have looked at for success in the growth in our, in our kids. And we want to ensure that if we're looking at benchmarks, where did we start? And where did we finish? And also the cost, obviously, is a piece of that. So my motion would be that we receive details periodically in reference to how this is going to take place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll get a report on that. I was in favor, both so ordered. But also, I just want to, I just save, nobody else has anything to say, is that I want to thank for the report. Now, this is probably the most detailed report we ever received in my career as, as the mayor. And I don't know who put it together, but there's a lot of work that was put into this. And it's good to have debate and challenges and, but I, I can see that the C is going in the right direction. That would be reflected in my evaluation. And I just, the data, I always learn, the more data you provide, the more questions you get. It's, it's, but I think this is going in the right directions. I like, I like the DIBELS, and even though it's not in your goals, but it just shows another point of view on where we're coming from as a district. So we're forward to the discussion. So we're forward to August 2nd to receive all the evaluations. And, and we can move forward, so much appreciated. Okay. With that, I guess we can file that. Some motions to file, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Uh, we have general business to review the facilities, naming and dedication policy, provide clarity around the process. Oh, financing missed out, I'm sorry. Uh, to consider a prior year payment in the amount of 300, $599 to, what was it, Flo Lab? Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Uh, to review the facilities, naming, dedication policy, and provide clarity around the process. Uh, Member McCullough?
As it reads.
We'll send that to FOG. What's that? Uh, Member Mailman?
Thank you. And I, possibly I wouldn't have filed for reconsideration if I knew this item was coming on, so I'm glad that it's, it's here. I just want to make a couple of comments that really, I think, part of what our policy talks about a few different things. School review, so, and it is not just about naming buildings. It is about dedications and all kinds of other stuff. And I want, like, like we had in the two items that we discussed last week. And some of these items come from many different places, right? Some, some might come from a funder to request this name. If, so we have a lot, and I appreciate that Member McCullough is going to bring all these varied situations to the, to her committee, so that, so that we can have a clearer policy. But two things I think that have not been consistent is that schools have not had a chance as site councils to review these types of things. And I also think for the purposes of our school committee is that this is our policy and, or at least it has been our policy, I imagine it still will be. And I think the whole public portion of how, I think we can do a better job, and I'd like us to really put some effort into the communication of this so that we're yelling it from the rafters, or we're finding other ways to communicate with families that if they didn't have a chance in a school review, or if community members didn't have a chance, they're not going to have a chance in a school review. That we are very clear about the public portion of those meetings so that we can get communities to show up. of those meetings so that we can get communities to show up. So it's, this is really, probably will even get more complicated as we think about fundraising goals and things like that. So, thank you, Member McCullough, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to refer that to FNOJ. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. The next item is approve a change in policy, school nutrition program changed policy to align with the approved student handbook and DESI requirements. Refer that to Finance and Operations. Uh, Member Biancheria?
Thank you. I have a question that goes back to the consent agenda, so I don't know how you want to do that. Do you want to go through the item that you just raised, Mayor, or do you want to, can I go back to the consent agenda? Because I have a question on that.
Okay. Let's go through the agenda first, and we'll go back at the end.
And we'll go back to, at the end?
Yeah, we'll take a roll call.
Okay. Because the consent agenda, the reason I want to do that is, it wasn't clear in what I received that that, it appeared to be separate, but it didn't have a number?
We'll come back to that in a minute. We're on the side. We'll go back to that in a minute.
Okay.
Okay. So this we can send to Finance and Operations. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. So the, what item, so you want to go back to what item? Take a vote on that.
Apparently it's under consent.
Yeah, which item?
It doesn't have a number is what the problem was. It's the monetary donation that discusses Chandler Elementary School and its page agenda. On my agenda, it's page 24 and page 25.
Can you just read the item?
The item is to consider approval of three donations from the Patriots Foundation along with a donation from Servus Pro in reference to Chandler Magnet Elementary School, excuse me.
Okay. So the motion is go back and spend the rules and go back, so we'll take a roll call. Roll call.
Member Alvarez? Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
No.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Uh, yes. Okay. What's the question?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate that. It's in reference to Servus Pro, and I appreciate the fact that they were present at the Chandler Elementary School, and they did improve and get some of the work done that would have been done over the summer. But my concern is that we had that on May 15th, but we didn't receive it until the agenda arrived for this agenda. So prior to that, we didn't receive information in reference to it. And from what I understand, that the custodial contract doesn't talk about donations and so on, but they were informed, and, but they were informed this past Friday. So I'm just, I have not only, over the last few years, but I grew up with unions, so I have a great deal of respect for what they have for contracts and so on. So I just want to ensure that when we are doing additional work in our schools, that we are looking at the whole picture, because some of the work that they did, there were questions about, should it be tested to make sure it isn't toxic? Did we, if there were chemicals that were going to be used, what were the chemicals? Were they in accordance with everything? And over my years of experience working for Worcester Public Schools for a number of years, I worked with the Sheriff's Department, and we did a lot of projects in the schools. So I certainly appreciate this type of work being done. But it always centered around discussing it with the union prior to. So my concern was that this wasn't brought up during talks with the union until after the fact, or they had already started to work on the school. So I was just wondering, was there was particular reason why we did not contact the union representatives prior to this being done?
Mr. Allen?
So it's my understanding that the Facilities Department actually did contact the Vice President of the Union who works in our schools, and it was the president who was not aware of this until recently. There was a meeting yesterday between the Facilities Department and custodial union to address their concerns. So the work has actually just begun. It's actually about three more weeks of work by Servus Pro. So this isn't something that has already been completed. The work is ongoing, just started this week and has some, a couple of more weeks to go.
From what I received from information, August 9th would be when they would be, when they would have completed the work that they were going to be doing?
Yeah, sounds right. Couple of weeks, you said, yep. Through the chair, that's correct.
And through the chair, are we looking at a listing of what they planned on doing? And are we, well, I should say, and who would then be ensuring the safety of the chemicals that they're using and what they're doing and how they're doing it? Is that facilities or a custodial? And how is that generated to ensure that it's being done correctly?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. So the work is being oversaw by, is, the Facilities Administration is monitoring their work.
So they would monitor everything that they're also using for supplies and so on? Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes.
I just would like to comment that out of respect to the Union, that I ask that when these are being done, that the proper channels are informed. I realize you spoke to the Vice President, but I would think that we would want to ensure that we spoke to the President of the Union to make sure it all filters down correctly, because they do have representatives, they do have a contract with us, and we should be upholding that, because I do not believe in vending companies that come in and replace our custodians. And I want to uphold the fact that we have our custodians, and that it's a strong union, and we appreciate those employees. Thank you very much.
I don't think we're replacing them, but I think we're just adding supplemental service to make the school better. So my thanks Servus Pro and their donation. Okay. Are we on now?
Can I ask a quick question about that too, Mayor?
Yep.
So at the last meeting, there were a whole bunch of reports that were never addressed. I think we forgot them. So, and this was one of them that Diana was talking about. They also don't show on this meeting for us to discuss them with those reports. Chris, he was absent. So would those reports be able to be put on in the August meeting?
Yeah, they should be. Yeah, well, yeah, it was my responsibility. I don't think I followed up on that. So yes, we can try to, if there was anything that was missing from the last agenda, we can put on for the August meeting. Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Through the chair. Now, you all said, we did discuss that when we set the agenda, and we will have that on for the August meeting. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, next we have innovation school annual evaluation reports are approved and filed. And there's several reports that were on the agenda, University Park, Quamont, Worcester Technical, and Goddard Scholars Academy at Sullivan Middle School. Any questions? So we can approve, we can file. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Next item is to, request that the information related to the new turf field at Darty High School, in response to please indicate answers to the following question. Has the turf been bought yet? Certainly cost was the factor in the field was chosen, whether the difference in specification based on cost, when and when is the next turf field replacement scheduled with Worcester Public Schools? The NFL is rejecting turf fields for safety reasons. Are there alternatives? As our city goes to build green, do we have concerns about, what's that, petrochemical fields? Has the mass association of schools weighed in on turf fields? Member Mailman?
Thank you. I just want to, I appreciate that we have discussed this. Member Novak had put this on during the last school committee session, so I know that it sits in Finance, Operations, and Governance, and would like to just add these lists. There are a growing list of towns that are denying turf fields. Medway, North Andover, Oak Bluffs, Wayland, Sharon. I, it is very disappointing to see that at the state level, and Worcester is very involved in this PFAS discussion with the firefighter's uniform. As you know, McGovern was a big champion for making sure that things happened, and unfortunately, our state didn't see fit to, to move forward with stronger regulation around those firefighter uniforms. And I think the discussion, as we had said six months ago or eight months ago whenever that item was filed, you know, the NFL has concerns. And the whole discussion about money and what is the real cost here of these fields, I think that we, I would like us, and it's going to be too late for Darty, that's why I'm asking specific questions about that, because I'm sure it probably has been bought. But did we go for a cheaper field, and that cheaper field has more PFAS, et cetera, et cetera? So I think this is a, an important item. I know there were people in Boston yesterday, and it was 90 degrees outside, and they went to Field, DCR Field at Emerson in Northeastern, and the field was 140 degrees. And that is, we talk about all the asphalt, you know, when we go out to the country to some of the other towns, perhaps, uh, Member Benanda, where she works, there's more trees and less asphalt. And this, these fields are even worse than asphalt. So there's tremendous injury concerns with these fields, and I just think that it's important for us to stay on top of it. And I, I was thinking that maybe towns, you know, they say, well, let's wait, some of these towns said, well, let's wait three more years, and they're waiting to see if there's a safer product. But all the time that we wait for that, to see if there's a safer product, we could be saying, how could we actually, you know, engineer and our fields with grass in environmentally friendly manner so that we don't have to have the discussion about plastic fields? Thank you. Mayor.
We're going to send that to Finance and Operations. Uh, Member Roy?
Thank you. I do want to say I'm really happy that this is going to FOG, because the turf fields do present with safety concerns, and there's something about the chemical of them that some students, that's not students, but some people have become very, very ill. There's like an allergy or some type of chemical reaction, and they've had severe respiratory problems. I'm not a fan, so I'm really glad to see that we're going to be discussing this in FOG. Thank you.
Send it to FOG. We'll probably ask Rob Antonelli to come in too and give his opinion on the field, since he's done a lot of study on that. So we'll send that to FNO. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Provided a report that shows the total number of teachers, administrators, and support personnel who have resigned their positions at Worcester Public Schools from May 2024 to the present. Member Benanda?
As listed.
Yeah, we get those periodically. It's always, I think the next one, I don't know when the next one's due, probably September, October.
Through the chair. We generally have them on the school committee agendas for approval. The, during the summertime, we wait because there's so much movement, and so the next one will be coming forward at the September, the first September committee meeting.
Okay. So, roll call. Member Mailman?
I just wanted to ask if this is different than the, you know, this information, as the superintendent through the chair just told us, is presented regularly to us? If this is a kind of year-end review of it, I'd like the past five years to be included as well, please. Thank you.
Past five years?
Yep. Comparison data. One year does, tells us nothing, so I'd like to see the other years. Thank you.
Okay, so as amended, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria? Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Provided a report that aligns the plan for supervision operation or transition program due to departure of the department head. The next two items, I don't know, I, I'm in council, I'm in council. Vice Chair Jermaine Johnson has his hands full sometimes. These are, these type of orders, I wonder, they're crossing the lines into the administration versus our responsibility, but we'll have the superintendent answer these questions. Miss Member Benanda for the first one.
Yeah, this is a big one that does need to be answered. The person that was the department head, working in the building, that was very aware of all those young adults that are over there, has taken on a position of head of the collaborative in Marlboro. And I've received, and I don't know if any other school committee member has, but I received another letter today from a staff member there that said they're afraid to go back to work because they feel there's nobody there that's going to be able to coordinate the program for over 90 young adults. And so I'm very concerned. The letter that came today was also concerned, of course, about the physical, the physical school there at Vanning, included copy of the fire station report that came in about safety of kids on the first floor, on the third floor. It gave me a copy of what the inspector for fire said to them in order to keep it safe there. So in the past, we were looking for another spot for those young adults, and now we don't have a coordinator. And I really, we have received some letters from parents, so I'm very concerned. I know we, I brought this up before when we did the budget, that we need a coordinator there. I'm probably the only one on the school committee that's worked with those young adults, and I know that some of them are fragile with their, with their health issues. You really, before something happens over there, we really need to have a coordinator. So I brought it up now. I know it's a finance issue because you have to pay for a person to do it, so that's why it's under jurisdiction, because it's a finance issue. But we're all responsible for the safety of all our students, and we get, you know, we get safety reports. We also should have somebody there as a coordinator going in, because there are 93, I think that's the last number that we got from the superintendent, young adults there. So that's why it's there. School's going to start up again in August. Staff are fearful to go back to work. We owe it to the staff and the kids to find the funding for a position to coordinate that program.
Um, absolutely, superintendent.
All right. Member Johnson has a question first.
Oh, Member Johnson, I'm here to see your hand up. Member Johnson?
Yeah, no problem. I, I just have a motion to file this.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to file. Uh, Member Roy? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to file. Uh, Member Roy?
Hi, yes, I just want to, we, we, uh, I just want to reach out and say through the chair that I, I have to agree. I'm very concerned and we all received the email from, um, a gentleman. Um, and this is concerning about the safety for staff and students. And I hope we can come to figure out some way that our teachers, our students will feel safe in going back to the program. And again, find, find money to find a supervisor for the building. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Member, uh, Guardiola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just feel that this is out of the purview of the superintendent and not the school committee. I mean, we all want safety, but I think that there's going to be a plan in place for something. But why are we as school committee members overseeing something that the superintendent should be doing?
That's a good point. That's the point I was trying to make. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, hang on, second member Biancheria?
As school committee members, we are responsible for what occurs in Worcester Public Schools. We work with the superintendent. There's that bridge we talked about earlier today, which I totally agree with, that I have described what we do. So the bottom line is whether it's transition program, North High, Chandler Elementary, we're responsible. We bite the bullet for that. We also are looking at a transition program. These kids, these scholars are very, very vulnerable. Whether we have a department head there or not, isn't what I'm looking at. I just want to make sure we have a plan that is going to be successful as it has been in years past. So I look forward to the information. But no matter how you look at this and no matter how you feel as though why you're a school committee member, yes, it has to do with the budget. Yes, it has to do with safety. It has to do with accountability. And that's all what we're responsible for. It's not just to sit and say, okay, we don't need to know about it because it doesn't involve 500 kids or it's not in our district. It's all part of what we do. And the superintendent, we had this discussion during budget. If we go further with the plan and how it's going to work, I certainly look forward to it with your information. Thank you.
Member McCullough?
Thank you. Um, I would just ask through the chair, you know, the superintendent had provided us previous information about how this was going to look for this coming year. Is that something she can actually, through the chair, I don't know if it's possible, but to speak to tonight? Just to reiterate what the plan is for the program, um, before we take any of the votes on the motions at hand?
Yep, I think she was pointing on doing that, but, uh, ma'am superintendent? Oh, Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes, thank you. To the chair, um, in regards to this, you know, I, I agree. Um, in regards to this being a superintendent, um, obligation to do. Um, she's in charge of running the day-to-day operations of the school. Again, this is a matter that would, could be easily resolved with a phone call to the superintendent to have that discussion, which I did, which I think she would speak to, kind of what the plan is moving forward. We wouldn't need to have this discussion if there were phone calls just made and conversations had with the superintendent around some of these day-to-day operations, um, of what's going on in the district. And, and then after that, if the answer isn't satisfactory or there's any other concerns that may need to be brought to the floor, then our items should be raised, um, at that time. But that was my recommendation, that there should be a phone call to the superintendent to have that discussion on what the plan is moving forward. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair. So just recently, we received the resignation of the department head. That was, um, that has been actually since, had been since last January overseeing the transition program when the coordinator had gone out on leave. Um, that person just resigned just recently. And so when I came back from vacation, I learned the person had resigned. We have an existing coordinator that we, um, that has the necessary licensure, um, that we have offered the position to. They will be placed there. Budgetarily, it is the same money that already was budgeted out of the department head. So we planned on giving an update to the committee during the FOG, um, governance meetings that we have that Mr. Allen provides periodically. But financially, it's the same money that was already put aside for the department head. We're going to repurpose it. We already have a job description for this position and we have a person that has the actual license to do that. Um, this all happened within a couple of days. What I, um, would want to say is just for clarity in terms of the purview, the purview of the, um, the committee is to allocate the funds. The funds have been allocated. They were allocated through, um, the budget and, and the department chair existed. It is then the, um, the management of it and as things are constantly shifting, and they do, especially before school starts, um, how the funds get spent are, is under, because they've already been approved, it's my responsibility to make sure that the thing, that how it's happening moves forward. So, um, there is this distinction and, 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 and as I said, a dance. I, um, would have very easily answered the question had it come to me and not, you didn't, it didn't need to wait until it was on a, an agenda. I mean, I'm happy to do that for anybody, but there would be no way that I would open up a school year and not have oversight at a very important program. I too ran a special education department. I understand the complexities and the importance of transition programs. These are youth that are staying with us from 18 until they turn 22. And we want to give them as much opportunity as possible to be independent as they go out into the world. And that is the purpose for a transition program. So, um, just like any other program, when there is a vacancy, the position will be flown. In this particular case, we did not fly the position right away because, well, first of all, there wasn't even enough time. This just, just happened. But secondly, because we had somebody in-house that we could offer the position to and we have since done that and they accepted it today.
Okay, so we have a motion to file or a call?
Um, Mayor, I have another question on that.
Sure.
So is the superintendent saying that the person coming in with, uh, the money that has been saved, that the person's salary coming in will, will be getting the salary of the department head rather than a coordinator?
Through the chair. No, what I'm saying is that we are going to repurpose those funds for the coordinator and bring to the committee as we do in the quarterly reports, any changes in, um, in budgetary adjustments.
Okay, so you're saying, uh, just so I get it right, that there'll be a coordinator now, not a department head, for the transition program? Is that what you're saying?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is to file and this is, I think, where you cross these lines that we're almost micromanaging the superintendent. And, uh, um, this, I mean, we can't ask the question, but actually get down and tell her what to do and, uh, that's her job. So, so the motion is to file, roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
No.
Member Benanda?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
No.
Mayor Petty?
Uh, yes. Next item is to provide a report explaining external job list that's posted on school spring and how these positions are being funded. I guess through the budget, but, uh, member Benanda?
So the day after we voted in the budget, the very next day, it was posted that five bus driver positions got, um, hired. And then on Monday following that Thursday, a list of 101 open positions in the Worcester Public Schools were posted externally. And the reason I put the item on is that I have asked this question of two, uh, twice of a cabinet member who has not responded, uh, to me, uh, with the explanation that fit the question. So I'm putting it here for a reason. So we, on that list were jobs that we had to cut. So for example, on a budget book, it says that the assistant director of technology will not be filled for one year. On that list was the assistant director of technology. On our list, we cut, we had, we cut a full team out of Worcester East Middle, sadly. On that list was the full team back on again. So my question is, and I'm thrilled if we found all this extra money for all those positions, some that had been cut, biology jobs at some places cut, people moved, and then the biology position at that same school was on that list. So I'm confused and it's, it is our, is it, it is in our purposal because it's a budget issue. And nobody wanted to answer the question. They just said to me, oh, that's just the normal bid list. No, it wasn't. 101 jobs that were cut, many of them cut on Thursday, show up on Monday, an external list for school spring. So my question is, do we find money for all those 101 jobs or what was that that was posted? Thank you.
Dr. Q?
So through the chair, I do apologize that I did take a vacation earlier this summer. I will try not to do that again. Um, I'm kidding. I will plan and take another one. But in all honesty, we knew this year that we were going to a really difficult budget year. There was a lot of positions that we held from, we had three transfer lists, one in November, one in February, and one in May. So any positions that were not bid successfully on, we held those positions to be posted in the summer so that we could assure that all our professional status teachers had positions. So we knew that going in. We knew that these positions were for this upcoming year. But there were no positions posted that was not already approved through the budget.
Okay, I think that was explained during the budget too, I think. Like, we're going to be moving.
So.
Positions, positions around. Go ahead, uh, member Benanda.
So through the chair, let's just take one, the assistant director of technology. It said, will not be filled for one year. Why was that on the list?
Through the chair, that position was not filled. It was actually the position of assistant director for Edu, uh, at Tech. It's a different position.
Okay.
And how about the, uh, four positions at Worcester East Middle? So that, they were cut, that team was cut. Now you're saying that, that team is back on?
Again, through the chair, every position that we posted were previously approved. We did not add any new positions that were not approved through the budget.
So I guess my question is though they were cut by the Thursday decision. So how do we add them on, on Monday when they were cut? I understand they were previous positions approved before the budget cuts. We weren't adding any new ones. But why did the ones that were cut get posted again? That's the question that no one seems to want to answer.
And Dr. Q?
Through the chair, it's really difficult. It's really, um, everything is moving very quickly. We had resignations, we had retirements coming in, so things are moving at a very fast pace at this time. I cannot tell you exactly, but I can tell you that we did not put any positions that had not been previously approved.
Uh, ma'am superintendent?
Through the chair to Dr. Q, maybe for clarity, or maybe this would help. Are there additional positions being placed at Worcester, Worcester East Middle School?
Through the chair, not that I am aware of at this moment.
So potentially, if there are vacancies, it's because not only the positions that we cut, but additional teachers may have left for other schools or they may have left for other districts and therefore we're, or, so we're, we're flying those positions. And they are flying both externally, but it's also, we have encouraged internal applicants to apply as well.
Through the chair, that is correct. And if you remember, I believe I shared what's happening a while back, the timeline that I shared with all the principals as to when we were doing the internal transfer list and we were doing the external transfer list. Um, I don't recall exactly when those, I, I know what the dates were, but I can't recall the coincidence to the budget meetings. I have to tell you the truth, but I do know that I did share all of those dates with the school committee a while back as to when we were floating, uh, I think June 7th was when we were floating some open positions. We were posting all the last transfer list and we're waiting for the two weeks, an additional two weeks for principal to actually interview uh, as we do with the contract before we can even post them externally.
And so perhaps, member Benanda, maybe it's different than when you were the superintendent. We use school springs for any opening. We don't have a differentiated, um, internal where we post just internally and then we use school springs for external. We use it as our database, if you will, or our base to capture all of the personnel. And so perhaps that's why it might look like we are flying new positions, but that is not the case. Anything that we're flying, it has already been approved, um, through the budget process.
Okay, so through the chair, I just want to make sure that I don't get misquoted. If we have money to fund those positions, I would be ecstatic because I, again, don't think we should have cut any teacher positions. However, the union contract, in example, for example, a science physician was cut from a high school. That person had a transfer to another high school. Now the position is listed again. At the high school, they left because the position was cut. Do, now can they, now the union contract didn't let you transfer back to a position because once you chose a position, you're stuck there for two years. You're not able to bid again. So the science physician at the school where the person had to leave, they didn't want to leave their school, so they asked me this question. That position was cut. We cut that on a Thursday. That position was advertised as open again on a Monday. Those people had already agreed, that girl had already decided to, she had to go to another school. So is now that position open and she can request to go back? Because she moved from a school she didn't want to go to because we cut that position and now that position is listed again.
Through the chair, it's a very difficult and complex, um, question to answer because there are so many factors. So was the teacher non-professional status that we had not renewed through the budget cut?
No, professional.
So if the teacher is a professional status teacher, I talked to many of them along with the union to say, as a professional status teacher, I shared here that we did not riff any teachers at all. And we started by saying, there's all these positions that are open. You're free to apply. We will make those, all those connections. But at some point, we do owe your positions. We were giving some time to folks to make decisions as to where they wanted to go. Now as to why, in that particular example, why the science position was open again, I could not answer that. It could be that someone resigned. It could be that some, um, principals had shifted some folks. But also I want to remind the committee that this year, we actually gave out non-renewed letters as of June 1st, as we promised, which is a full two weeks before we've ever, that we had to give it. So we couldn't have put out positions that week because we didn't put out positions until much later. So I'm not sure. Um, but again, I don't want to get into personnel and specific.
Yeah.
Questions because it's too very complex at this moment.
Okay, so, um, we get the answers to.
It's still as clear as.
What's that?
But thank you for your explanation. I said it's still not clear, but I, I guess that's as good as it's getting. Thank you. You can, uh, uh, you can file that item.
Okay, we're going to file this and this is again, we're crossing the lines here a little bit in the operation of the schools. And, uh, I understand the broader pictures explain the budget process and how this is done. I get that question. But to get down to talk on individual cases is not, I think, appropriate here, but we'll file the item. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn, I think. Yep. All set. Roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Benanda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes.